If you could please take your seats. It being past the hour of 7 o'clock on June 2nd, 2014, I hereby call this town meeting to order. Mr. Messeri.
I move that the following persons be admitted to the meeting. Greg Valiakonis, Town Administrator. Elizabeth Paveo, Finance Director. Darren Klein, Town Council. Robert Toros, Transcript and Freedom of the Floor. Carol Ducrow, Town Clerk Staff, Freedom of the Floor. Paul Brinkman, Consultant to DPW. Kathleen Willis, Superintendent of Schools. Richard Conavel, DPW Director. Amy Lukowicz, Town Youth Services. Wayne Hardaker, School Department. Maureen Stevens, Operations Director, Parks and Rec. Eugene Turick, IT. Debbie Carbone, Assessing. Martin Fair, Board of Health. Rob Carbone, NORCAM, Freedom of the Floor. Jason Smith, NORCAM, Freedom of the Floor. Mary Ann McKay, Treasurer/Collector. Allison Olson, Human Resources. Daniel McKnight, Town Planner. Alina Minton, Library Director. Judy Segura, Library Assistant Director. Michael P. Murphy, Chief of Police. Kimberly Carroll, Intern. Michael Conley, Director of Finance. Mark Clark, Utility Superintendent. Megan Crowley, 20-year-old Coach Road. Stephen Kearns, 20-year-old Coach Road. This is a good one, I can't read it. An individual living at 9 Abbott Road, North Reading. Owen, I guess it's maybe Randy or Cindy Carson and Owen Carson of 9 Abbott Road. I apologize, but I can't make out one of the names.
We have the motion as a ready discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous? The visitors may enter the hall. Just some administrative matters while they're entering. The visitors should be sitting to my right in the front section unless they work for the Town of North Reading, in which case they can sit in the first few rows in the center section. Everyone should be wearing a ribbon. Registered voters have an aqua ribbon. All visitors and guests have a black ribbon. Please take a moment now to shut off your cell phones so they do not go off during And there were warrants available as you entered the hall. If you didn't pick one up and you need one for the vote tonight, raise your hand. Carol is down the back and she'll bring one to you. And then also on your way out, you can get a copy of the town's annual report on your way out. It'll be on the tables as you exit the hall. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Messeri to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to take a point of privilege. Earlier this year, a friend of town meeting passed away. He was my predecessor, Klaus Kubierski. Klaus served as Town Moderator in North Reading for 20 years, and he was ever so helpful as I started when I took over for Klaus. So I would ask if I could please have a moment of silence in Klaus's memory. Thank you. Mr. Messeri.
Mr. Moderator, another point of privilege. I'd like to recognize Greg Valiakonis, our Town Administrator, this evening. Greg, could you please stand up? Greg has been our Town Administrator for nine years, and he is elected to move on. And this is his last official act as a member of town meeting. So during his tenure, he has brought this town along. We've increased the strength of our staff, and we've had balanced budgets for the past nine years of his tenure. I'd just like to give him a round of applause.
Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Another point of personal privilege, I also want to acknowledge and thank, over the years, the League of Women Voters for their participation in quenching our thirst and feeding us during all these many, many sessions of town meeting, as many of you have proudly followed in the transcript. They will be disbanded in North Reading. And they are noticeably absent tonight, and I'm sure missed by many of us, but I do want to thank Meg Robertson, Cynthia Beryl, and Ginny Mills, the current members, for their service to the town and the community as the League of Women Voters, and certainly to this body over more years than I can remember. So again, just thank you to the League.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and to refer to the articles by number, and further to dispense with the reading of the return of service by the constables.
We have the motion as a ready discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? Before we get to the first article, there was one housekeeping matter I missed, and that is to tell us for this evening, should we need a in-count. Counting the front section and to my right will be Jovino. Counting the center section will be an individual who used to sit in the front section, Mr. Sean Delaney. And counting to my left, Jeff Simons. To Article 1, Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. I move to transfer the sum of $24,035 from free cash to line 87, School Department expenses, equipment, for the purposes of purchasing and equipping a utility van, and $50,000 from the fire salaries line 33 to ambulance reserve as specified in Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion as a ready discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please...oh, I'm sorry. I'm going too fast. Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Yul. Unanimous? For the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous? Article 2, Mr. Fode.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town transfer from free cash a sum of $265,924 to fund a deficit in the fiscal year 2014 snow and ice budget as specified in Article 2 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion as the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Fode.
Board of Selectmen recommend pass.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
And the Finance Committee recommends. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? Article 3, Mr. Fode.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash a sum of $262,555 to be added to the capital improvements day legal fund established under Article 5 of the October 2007 town meeting as specified in Article 3 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion as the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Fode.
Board of Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
The Finance Committee recommends. As this is a stabilization article, it requires a two-thirds vote. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries by two-thirds vote. As declared. Mr. Fode, Article 4.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from the fiscal year 2014 Water Department retained earnings to the sum of $168,573 to be added to the Water Stabilization Fund as specified in Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Fode.
Board of Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
So another stabilization fund requires a two-thirds vote. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Article 5, Mr. Yul.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Article 5 for the year 2014 appropriate money to stabilization. I move to pass over Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Yul.
Board of Selectmen recommend to pass over.
Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? Article 6, Mr. Yul.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 6 for year 2014 appropriate funds for overlay deficit. I move to pass over Article 6 as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Yul.
Yes, on a majority vote, the Board of Selectmen move to pass over.
Does the Finance Committee wish to make a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends passing over the article.
The Finance Committee recommends passing over as well. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous? Article 7, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to choose all necessary town officers not elected by ballot and to determine what instructions shall be given.
We have the motion as the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
The Finance Committee.
No action required.
No action required on the part of the Finance Committee. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous? Article 8, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the printed town report for the year 2013 as the report of town officers and committees, and to hear other reports as may be presented at this
We have several reports to be given at the meeting. Five, I believe, unless I missed one. So we will start with the Secondary School Building Committee, Mr. Chuck Carucci. And as I understand it, he would like a 15-minute leave of the meeting. So if we could take a 15-minute leave of the meeting for purposes of the Secondary School Building Committee's presentation, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, we'll take a 15-minute leave of the meeting. Mr. Carucci, you have 15 minutes.
Thank you. I'm up here to give you a little briefing of our timeline for the new school project that's going on. We also have one member on our committee who keeps track of the days. How many days we got left, Jerry?
98.
98 days till we go into the new high school. This has been going on for 22 months, so it's on time, and the money is holding out so far.
That's sweet.
It's encouraging. The high school core facility, including the media center, the auditorium, the cafeteria, the kitchen, gymnasium, will be completed for 2015 school year, starting on September 8th. So that's the date to shoot. So do you have this little timeline? The middle school will be emptied, moving to the existing high school. They will be moving down to here on June 24th, 2014. The existing high school will be packed simultaneously with the middle school. Everything is going to be put in boxes and moved. Demolition work will begin on the middle school on June 30th of this year. The new access road, which has been shut off out there. The traffic signal is going in, the landscaping. The middle school construction will also start, and we'll be ready for our September 8th. The high school faculty student parking will be available in the new parking lot behind the new high school. We have 285 spaces right now. The rest of the spaces that are up there will be given to the construction so that they can work on the middle school. The green building you see off to the right out here, that's our wastewater treatment plant. That's online now, so that's ready for the school year. The building you see being built out behind the turf field, that is a field, it's not a fieldhouse, it's a team room, which has bathrooms in it and where the players will go to when the school is in session. We also have about a 10-minute presentation on a DVD here, hopefully. How are we doing? I also would like to thank Greg Valiakonis, who's been on the committee for us for this amount of time that we've been involved in it. We started this in 2005. So Greg has been very helpful, keeping track of the money. We have collected, so that you know, from the state, someplace between $18 and $22 million has come back to the town already for the project. That's part of our reimbursement. So you don't forget, we are allowed 52% back from the state on this project, of all things See, that's why I didn't want to run the computer. And I'll mention this again, anybody that wants to take a tour of the high school or the core facility, you call me anytime, I'll take you through it. All right? Are we good? That's why we needed 10 to 15 minutes. Also, for you people who are interested in basketball and the new gymnasium, there's 14 baskets in that gymnasium. We only have 12 basketballs, but we got 14 baskets. Are we good? This is narrated, so you won't have to listen to me. In-house photographer Jeff Simons, who's taken all the pictures. Eventually, we will have our whole program put together. He's also the narrator for this.
Middle school. And science lab with a view to the south over the current high school. And here you can see a finished science lab over the current high school. And here you can see a finished science lab. Final stage of the finishing work, painting today. In between the science labs are teacher prep rooms. All the lab tables have been installed, gas and water lines. Lab stations will be around the perimeter of the room. Student tables have arrived and are ready to go. And up the hallway. Lockers have arrived and are ready for installation. So they'll be here on the left side of the hall. Here you can see the atrium. The entrance to the high school, down to the lower level, level zero. There's mid-level, level one, that we're currently on, up to level two, and the atrium. Right behind us is the distance learning lab. It's a small auditorium that can accommodate about 100 people. Lecture, the video, hookups for... Podcast meetings and lectures. Continuing around the atrium. Hallway at high school. Some collaborative space. Six of these spaces, two on each floor on either side of the atrium. We're leaving the high school now, crossing over the bridge. And we will enter onto Main Street. And entering Main Street. The entrance to the high school. First thing off to our left on Main Street is the media center. To our right is the new auditorium. The construction deck is in the process of being removed. It was installed in order to build up all the ceiling infrastructure, acoustic clouds, electrical, and plumbing work. You can see the control rooms for light and sound at the rear of the auditorium. You can see the top half of the stage proscenium. And now the seating bowl is back in with removal of the construction deck, all the Ticket booth for the auditorium. And the inside of the media center. With some meeting rooms, center space, and then the main libraries. Continue down Main Street. To our left is the main entrance where high school students will come in, they're dropped off, or take a bus. Section right ahead of us here is all high school administration, guidance, high school principal, vice principal, administrators, some office rooms. To our right is the high school cafeteria. Kitchen area, serving area, it's in the middle stores. Continuing down Main Street, the current two-story part of the middle school is coming into view on the left. The top floor will continue to house the sixth grade. The bottom floor will have some nursing, guidance, and some art studios. While the middle school's under construction, this is the middle school cafeteria, and that will house some of these functions temporarily for the year that it takes to reconstruct the middle school. Continuing on Main Street. Here we have a good view of the current two-story middle school. And we will enter the gymnasium. At this point, all the backboards and basketballs have been installed, and the wood has arrived for the floor. And that process is about to begin. Cleaning up the floor from construction and getting ready to install the flooring. Doors to the back lead to locker rooms and health classrooms. And through this exit of the gym is the alternative physical education space. It'll have a special type of flooring installed that has some flexibility to it. So this will house things like aerobics or wrestling types of classes. And we cross over into the weight room and fitness room at the rear of the building. And you see out to the main parking lot, which is where all the teachers and students that drive their car. Athletic offices for athletic director and trainers. Back out to the gym. And we'll exit through the main entrance to the North Reading High School and Middle School, heading back out towards the main parking lot. the main parking lot.
It's hard to visualize looking at everything out there on the floor that we have ninety-eight days to put students in that building. And it's gonna be a push, but I think it'll work out fine. The only thing, the last thing I'll leave you with is I came through those doors in nineteen fifty-seven to this high school. And I am leaving in two thousand fourteen with a nice project, a big project for this town. This town should be proud of itself for this endeavor that's going on. Thank you very much.
We also have a report from the recycling committee, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. Narrator. My name's Ed McGrath. I'm on the recycling committee. We are, um, give this report on what's going on with the recycling and solid waste program in North Reading. In two thousand eight, we had put a limit of four thirty-gallon barrels or bags of trash per week. Had the weekly curbside recycling. We put a visible recycling program on the books and instituted a two-hundred-and-twenty-six-dollar annual trash fee. Last year, we reduced the amount of trash households can put out to three thirty-five-gallon barrels. And this year, starting July one, the limit's gonna be two thirty-five-gallon barrels. So we've gone from a hundred-and-twenty gallons to a hundred-and-five, and we're going to seventy gallons. Program right now, we've had curbside recycling, curbside trash pickup. We've had hazardous waste and special collections, which is happening this Saturday. In fact, we have a yard waste drop-off area and a compost pile where residents can get compost for free. We added a scrap metal dumpster at the DPW complex. And in this year, with the new contractor, JRM, we doubled the amount of curbside yard waste collections we're doing. We added a scrap metal curbside collection. We added a paper shredding event last month. And this Saturday, we're adding, we're gonna be collecting rigid plastics. And they'll leave information on this in the transcript this week. As for the two-barrel limit. In May two thousand twelve, JRM did a survey. And we found eleven percent of households, about four-hundred-and-fifty-one households, put out three or more barrels of trash. Last month, they conducted another survey. And the number is six percent, or two-hundred-and-forty-six households, put out three barrels of trash or more. And then, look at this in a graphic nature. The, almost ninety-five percent of the households will not be affected by this reduction. Reason we're doing this is to save money. This is our tipping fees right now. This year, right now, we're paying sixty-five dollars a ton in tipping fees. We have a new contract with the Kofanta incinerator up in Haverhill. And you see the price is right there. And for those who've been around long enough and remember the grand old days of Nezwick, when we were paying a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a ton to burn our trash, this is a bargain. Since FY oh-nine, this graphic shows that trash has been gradually declining on a townwide basis, those residents that participated in the solid waste program. Were just about four, just over forty-eight-hundred tons per year. On the recycling side, paper is going down. We're trying to figure that out. I hear, oh, people are going online, going online. And then I hear on the radio that the Direct Marketing Association is saying they're adding more catalogs to the mail. They're using database marketing and targeting households and sending out magazine-like catalogs. So this is a, this is a challenge. We know the recycling rate in North Reading for paper is about thirteen percent. The state and DPA estimate that paper makes up about thirty percent of the solid waste stream. So we look at this as an area for improvement. On the co-mingle, the plastic bottles, cans, glass, metal, we're rebounding from last year. We had a big drop-off, but we're on the rebound. And, um, there's not much more we could say. We're happy, we're happy for the rebound. Our concern was the decline. But part of this would be too, is more, more materials are being made, containers are being made with plastic than they are with glass or metal. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we came out with the Lose Weight North Reading campaign. And I'd like to say, we've kept the weight off. Now we're going after the six-pack apps. So this is a good, good indicator. This FY fourteen is through April. Um, we're, we're down twelve pounds per month, which is good. So what all this means is savings. Since FY oh-six, we have averaged almost ninety thousand dollars a year in avoided tip fees. Last year, it was eighty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. And this year, just through the first ten months of the year, we're already at seventy-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. I'm for trying to save money. This is what we're trying to get to. The picture on the, on the left is what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to get out, where households are putting out more recycling bins, they are trash bins. We told people that if you have an extra, you're cut back on your trash, and you've got an extra trash bin in your garage, and you didn't have a recycling bin, come see us. We have stickers, we'll convert, magically convert your old trash barrel into a recycling bin. So again, as of July first, two thousand fourteen, we're going down to two thirty-five-gallon trash barrels per home. And that means to recycle more. And part of that is happening this Saturday. Uh, nine to twelve at the DPW complex. We are, we're taking propane tanks and tires. There's a nominal fee for those, that's a pass-through to the vendors. We're also taking car batteries, fluorescent bulbs, mercury thermometers, thermostats, mercury batteries, scrap metal. And I emphasize scrap metal because it makes no sense to put scrap metal out on the curb, have JRM pick it up, bring it up to Govanta. We pay the weight, that adds to our tonnage. We pay Govanta to burn our metal. They take our metal and scrap it and make money that way. Um, and then we're also adding this year, the rigid plastics. And there'll be more details in this week's paper about what's being collected. But as my, my initial thought is, if your daughter's graduating this Friday, and you had one of those plastic houses you bought when she entered kindergarten, and it's still in your backyard, you can recycle it this Saturday. And the, finally, if your recycling bin is being held together by duct tape, string, and bubble gum, you can come this Saturday, turn it in to get it recycled and pick up a brand-new recycling bin at no charge. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Narrator.
We, we also, thank you, Mr. McGrath. We also have a report. We also, also have a report from DPW Director Carnavale on wastewater. And the report will be delivered by the consultant for the town.
Good evening. I'm Paul Brinkman. I work with Dick Carnavale in the DPW. And we work on a lot of different projects together. And I want to give you a summary of some of the things that have been going on in the last year. So we're gonna talk briefly about the master plan. And we've been working on a draft environmental impact report relative to the water and wastewater system. I'll go over that, and then I'll talk briefly on stormwater. So the water master plan, the last time the town did one was in nineteen ninety-two. And so it's time to kind of take a look at that. Uh, some of the initial recommendations coming out of that are several capital improvement plans, which you'll see later on in the evening that are up for funding. And additionally, there's a larger capital improvement plan that's being put together with a ten-year window that involves the finance committee and the Board of Public Works and all, all the folks to make sure that it's a, a proper package. So the first one is the Tower Hill Water Storage Tank. And as you can see from these photos, those bolts actually hold the tank down. It's basically a metal tank sitting on concrete. And they're starting to corrode pretty severely. The tank was built over seventy-five years ago, and they need replacement. The next thing is upgrading the wells at the West Village Water Treatment Plant, which involves replacing the pumps, which have got to a point where they're not producing enough water to make them viable to operate. So we're gonna go in and replace those. And it involves some electrical system upgrades as well. Uh, one of the major ones relative to the DEIR is the advancement of, um, computer modeling relative to the systems. As you can see, North Reading sits in that non-yellow area. And the yellow areas are communities that are served by MWRA. Looking at connecting to them to provide a more sustainable and a more continuous source of water. And they, MWRA is requiring us to do some additional modeling to make sure we understand what impacts we're having on their system and how to connect to their system. We're gonna be looking at the water treatment plants, which are currently underperforming. They're not producing as much water as they could. So we wanna take a look at those and maximize that use so that you can reduce the amount that you're buying from Andover. And the last article this evening is for water distribution system improvements. Whenever we go out and pave a road, we wanna make sure that we're not gonna have to dig it up in a year or two afterwards. So they go in and they make sure that the hydrants are all up to snuff, there isn't gate valves that need repairing, there aren't bits of water system. So this article here will pay for those improvements in advance of paving. So as far as the DEIR on the water side is, we're looking at alternatives to finding a sustainable solution to, for, for the town's water system. You currently get about sixty to seventy percent of your water from Andover. And that, it hasn't been as reliable as you would want. They also just recently raised their prices fifteen percent. And it, it just is something that, that may not be sustainable over the long term. So we're looking at controlling those costs, looking at being able to provide as much water as you need to the people and, and control the costs of that. MWRA is a very logical solution. They have excess capacity. A lot of people are very interested in UConnecting. And the town of Reading has provided us a, a letter of support. They're very encouraged by, by going ahead with that. To make that happen, we'll have to bring water in through Reading or Wilmington to, to get that there. So we're, we're looking at a lot of different factors right now. And this is what takes time, is understanding all the costs of the project and where, where this goes. Looking at the costs of what you have now versus changing that system. One of the major factors is a buy-in fee that would be charged to the town through MWRA. But currently, there's a bill in the Senate right now that's been voted on and approved and sitting in the House Ways and Means. It's Bill S. two-zero-two-one, which could potentially reduce that buy-in cost by half, which could play really well in your favor. And there's a lot of other benefits listed below. So on the wastewater side, we're looking at, you know, what are the sustainable solutions? What can we do to, to improve the wastewater challenges that you have in town? There are a lot of failures in, in subsurface disposal systems. So we're looking at pumping records, we're looking at those failures, we're looking at water quality, um, options. And so as we gather that information, we wanna find out what are the alternatives to, to making it better? So some of the options are treating it in town or looking to a larger regional facility outside, which includes Lynn, Suffolk Sewage, MWRA, and finally, Greta Lawrence. Greta Lawrence actually has capacity right now. And they recently connected the town of Drakehead through Methuen in a very similar manner. And so we, we believe that we wanna look at that option to make sure that, that this, this makes sense and that the town can afford that. Some of the benefits you get out of, out of improving wastewater is improving water quality because these failing septic systems really impact the Up Switch River, Martin's Pond, Martin's Brook. It'll help sustain commercial business, promote new economic development. And a study done in twenty-eleven by FXM showed that it would increase tax revenues by inexcessive a million dollars. Lastly, stormwater, very important factor in the town. The town's doing a lot of investigations. They just completed the phase-one drain mapping. And as you can see in the photos, these are some of the things they found. This is basically sewage getting into the drain system. And this is one of the impetuses for the NIPD's permit is they wanna make sure that this isn't happening because that's pollution that's not supposed to go there. So, um, this, this permit is forthcoming, probably in the next year or so, where they're gonna require you to go out and do stuff with this. The town's being very proactive about making these investigations, discovering where the problems are. Um, there's another phase of investigations that's required, and that's, um, on the reserve list for funding potentially next year. The last thing is that under stormwater is that the, the town has recently completed a stormwater utility study looking at the equivalent residential unit, basically saying what each person's impact is on the stormwater system and how much that might cost. And that, that is a study just to help, uh, look at the cost. They've been estimated about a half a million dollars a year are spent towards meeting stormwater requirements. So why are we worried about all these things? Well, we wanna pull them all together so that we're being smart about our planning. We wanna make sure that if we're gonna spend money on stormwater, it goes to the right stormwater and that it doesn't cause an impact to the water system or the drain system. All these things are related. So we wanna make sure that we pull them all together as we're planning, moving forward, and coming up with capital improvement plans. So future activities include continuing the draft environmental impact report. The, the processes can be very timely. There's a lot of stakeholder involvement. And we're estimating that it'll take until about the summer of twenty sixteen before we're complete. Um, and then there's another phase to it where we go through a final environmental impact report. And that, that's estimated a year later. That is actually very well timed with MWRA, who is currently doing a redundancy project in the northern intermediate high area. The blue lines you can see above are the, where the existing water mains are. And they're basically trying to make that system more robust. Once that is, work has been completed, it'll be easier for the town to get the water from, um, from MWRA because their system isn't quite large enough. These new pipelines that they'll be installing will allow you to get that water that you need. It has been a challenge for the MWRA. If you've read in the paper that a lot of the communities are, are challenged. And that's hence all the colors. They've only been able to install pieces of the system up to this point, and they're still in design. And they're looking at twenty sixteen or later before their work is complete. So in summary, I wanted to make sure that people understood that we're trying to look at all these things together in a holistic manner, using principles of asset management, being smart so that you're not, you know, laying pavement and then coming back and digging it up later because you find some other problem there. So by doing that, you're, you're efficient with your resources, you're not spending money. It takes time to do this, unfortunately. You can't just kind of wave a wand and, and hope that you're all done. And one of the things we want people to recognize is that we really appreciate the, the support and the funding that Town Meeting provides. I'm all set.
Thank you. We also have a report from the finance committee, the chair, Abigail Hova.
Good evening. This evening, I will be voting on the budget for fiscal two thousand and fifteen. This budget represents the hard work and effort of the municipal and school officers. Once again, limited funds admit that it has been a challenge to meet the needs of the town and provide the level of services expected by North Reading. Those involved in the process are to be commended for their diligence. I would like to mention a few items which have occurred during the past year and comment on our upcoming budget. The town stabilization fund is funded at three-point-eight percent. This falls short of the desired five percent. We must continue to make every effort to add funds as available to grow and maintain this fund. Not only is this fund important should a true emergency occur, but it is necessary to maintain our bond rating. We saw the impact of conservative budgeting approaches and a reasonable stabilization fund in the lower borrowing costs for the new high school and middle school complex. It is true that this evening, the finance committee recommended not to put money into the stabilization fund. In part, this was because we know that this spring, those funds are not available. Going forward, we need to continue to add to this fund. Two years ago, the Board of Selectmen formed a capital improvement planning committee. This committee was charged with creating a planning process for both short as well as long-term capital needs through the use of available cash and the long-term debt. In addition, the capital committee has worked towards developing In addition, the Capital Committee has worked towards developing a dedicated source of funding for capital items. This is extremely important. In the past, we have used a combination of short as well as long-term bonding and free cash to finance capital needs. Free cash is always an unknown. For example, the snow and ice deficit can drain a good amount of free cash. This makes capital planning very difficult. You will be asked this evening in Article Three to appropriate funds to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. This fund is used for capital needs and debt stabilization. Those of us who served on the Capital Improvement Committee are delighted that the town is making an effort to maintain and grow a fund for capital needs. Don Kelleher, Chair of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, will be making a presentation this evening to include capital items to be funded as well as the plan for growing the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund for future needs. The hope is to eliminate short-term bonding. In Article Fourteen, you will be asked to approve capital expenditures. Please support all both these issues. One of the most important financial challenges facing North Reading and most other towns and cities in Massachusetts is the funding of health insurance cost obligations to our retirees, future retirees, and their spouses. You will hear this referred to as Other Post-Employment Benefits Program, or OPAP. Essentially, it is the future cost of the town's share of the insurance while people are in retirement. A recent actuarial study of this liability puts the present value of this future expense for North Reading at a staggering sixty-seven million. Through a combination of long-term, thirty years, funding and hopefully some release relief from the state legislature, a plan needs to be put in place to provide for this very real financial obligation. Future budgets will have to include a substantial provision to fund OPAP. Again, I would like to thank all department heads in the School Department and their operations, and Finance Director Mike Connolly, the Town Administrator, the Town Finance Director, for their hard work in developing this year's budget. Town Finance Director Liz Paveo has attended all our meetings and kept us informed of financial issues in a timely fashion. Her advice and support have been invaluable. Plus, she dresses so much better than the rest of the Finance Committee members. A special thanks to Kathleen Willis, superintendent who will be retiring this fall. It has been a pleasure working with Kathy over the past four years. Her leadership has added to the education of our children. She has seen the town through the construction of the new high school and initial rehabilitation of the middle school. And Kathy has worked diligently on a number of town committees. Her humor, warmth, and intelligence will be missed enormously. I would also like to thank our Town Administrator Greg Valiconas, who will be moving on to a new community. Greg has worked with the Finance Committee for the past nine years, helping us to negotiate the ins and outs of town government and finance. We wish him the best of luck in his new endeavor. This fall's town meeting will take place in the new high school. Many thanks to the Schools Building Committee for the hours and hours of work put in to bring this project to fruition. And to the townspeople of North Reading, a huge thank you for supporting the high school, middle school project with both your words and your tax dollars. Thank you.
We also have a presentation from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Mr. Kelleher, you have the floor.
The Capital, as Abby mentioned, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee was spawned two years ago. Our composition of the committee is to represent all areas of the town. General Government represented by Greg Valiconas and Liz Paveo. Janine Ambriano and Mike Connolly represent the schools. Bob Misari and Joe Foti from Board of Selectmen. And Abby and I from the Finance Committee make up the committee. So we've pretty much got everybody's interest covered in the committee. This year, the second year, we asked the departments to submit three-year budgets. In the previous request, it was just a one-year for Fiscal Fourteen. We asked for three-years of budgets in the current year. We zeroed in on the 2015 requests. There were twenty-three requests from General Government and Schools for about a million and a half dollars. Hillview had one request for a million dollars. And Water Enterprise, eight requests totaling one point three million dollars. We evaluated all the proposals. And then each of the committee members individually voted on what they thought were the more the most important projects, we ranked them, and then did a compilation of all of the rankings. We interviewed the town department heads that were proposing these capital acquisitions, either with them or with their consultants. In the case of Water and Sewer. We did a field visit to go look at some of the equipment and vehicles that were being requested for replacements. So we looked at, gave a pretty close look at all of the items that were requested. In the end, and you'll see this in Article Fourteen, we recommended to the Selectmen a total of thirteen requests for the General Government and Schools totaling eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The one request from Hillview for a million dollars. And six requests by the Water Enterprise for a total of fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars. Those items in the water requests, for the most part, you saw in the presentation that was previously given. The funding for the Fiscal Fifteen Capital Program was hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars from free cash, a budget appropriation of a hundred thousand dollars, and we're bonding eight, five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of items. The Chapter Ninety's Road Program received five hundred and seven thousand dollars. We'll receive five hundred and seven thousand dollars from the state, plus a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which is included in the five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar bonding number. That's not quite everything that was asked for in the Road Program, but it's almost ninety-five percent of the requests that Dick had put together. So we think we're doing a pretty good job in providing for not only the roads, but for other parts of the infrastructure. Going forward, in order to make the capital program sustainable, we needed a plan for funding the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. As I mentioned, there was an appropriation in this year's budget of a hundred thousand dollars. We're recommending that that be increased by twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the next several years. That we dedicate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash to the stabilization fund. Part of it at the June town meeting, and then the balance, the bigger piece of it, in October when we've got a better idea what the free cash is going to be. And we'd like to increase the pay-as-you-go purchases from the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in 2016 to two hundred and twenty-five thousand by 2020. The importance of this is that we're not bonding items that have a life of five years. That those are almost routine items. We shouldn't be bonding them. We have to bond them this year. We've had to bond them in the past when we had no fund to pay for them. But by funding this Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund, we can put it on a program where items of five years are paid for in cash and not put onto the debt schedule. We would reduce bonding, as I said, of five-year items. We're bonding two hundred and twenty-five thousand in Fiscal Sixteen. That would go down to a hundred and twenty-five thousand by 2020. So it's a process. We're not going to change this overnight. But if we follow the addition of twenty-five thousand dollars a year to the stabilization fund, put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from free cash into the stabilization fund, we'll be able to do this. What would happen to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund? Would go from seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in Fiscal Sixteen to a million more than that, or a million one sixty-five by 2020. The importance of that is it gives us some structure to the capital program that when things come up, not if they come up, but when they come up. And we don't know what they are now. We're looking at three years, but something's going to happen. We're going to need to be able to deal with it. We've got a fund to deal with it. This program would provide eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in annual capital spending from the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund and long-term bonding. And we would be able to maintain our debt service, the non-exempt debt, at one point one million dollars, which is next year. The idea was that that's a budgeted item. And by building this fund and operating it with some constraints on what we acquire and by building the fund to the one point seven million dollars, we can hold the debt limit, the debt service, to one point one million dollars. It's important because it gives some stability to the budgeting process. There are a lot of competing items for the budget, as you well know. Having something set aside as a known is very important. So I think I've gone over this. Increase the appropriation, dedicate three hundred and fifty thousand to free cash, and increase pay-as-you-go. Those are our going-forward items. We'd reduce the bondings. Am I going backwards? I think I... How about that? And that's it?
Thank you. Any other town officers or committees seeking recognition? Seeing none, we had a motion a short while ago. Would the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation this way? No. No. They recommend. On the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Nine, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Department of Public Works to accept easements on behalf of the town as specified in Article Nine, as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. O'Leary?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Chilbert.
There's no action required on this article.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Ten, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements as specified in Article Ten, as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. O'Leary?
Once again, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Chilbert.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Eleven, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate such sum as may be allotted from the Chapter Ninety in portionment for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, or maintaining roadways within the town of North Reading as specified in Article Eleven, as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. O'Leary?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Chilbert.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Twelve, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article Twelve.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. O'Leary?
Since all our bills are paid, we recommend passing over.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Chilbert.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article Thirteen, Mr. Frisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in column-headed Selectmen-recommended in the line items one through one oh four and excluding line ninety-one, debt service, including the transfer of other funds, all as set forth in the budget detailed dated June second, two thousand and fourteen, totaling fifty-five million, nine hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. And furthermore, that the lines for department salaries and expenses shall be considered a single appropriation for each department except for line seventy-two through eighty-nine, education, and ninety-two through one oh four, water, Hillview, and Park and Recreation Enterprise funds. And furthermore, to fund the first-year contract settlements with the following municipal unions and groups: police, superior officers, DPW, administrative staff, non-union employees, and library.
We have the motion. Does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation?
The Board recommends.
For the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Frisco.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to request a ten-minute leave of the meeting so we can run through a presentation.
A ten-minute leave of the meeting for purposes of a presentation. All those in favor of a ten-minute leave of the meeting for purposes of a budget presentation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. Valiconas, ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me the privilege to speak before you this evening. And thank you for the nice ovation earlier. This town has always welcomed me, and I will miss that. It's a great community and should be very proud of what this community's accomplished. The fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget, I'd like to provide you with an overview. And the budget goals that you see behind you are the same as we've identified in recent years. The hallmark of this budget is based upon conservative revenue assumptions that are developed between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, and the members of the Financial Planning Team. The goal, as you can see, is to build critical reserves. And the Chairman of the Finance Committee spoke earlier about how important that is and how vital that is to the community's future well-being. One of the other goals that we've been able to establish is creation of long-term savings through labor contract negotiations. And that's in cooperation with the unions that we reached settlement with. For next fiscal year, there are six total unions. We are obligated and we wish to maintain an affordable and quality health insurance plan. And I put down compliant, because I'll speak a little bit about health insurance later on. Development of alternative revenue sources to ease pressure on the tax rate. Establishing long-range budget funding strategies for capital, as Mr. Kelleher spoke to earlier. And then, not to be overlooked, the importance of the collaboration that exists with the budget between town and school leaders through the Financial Planning Team. And really, the result of this budget is twelve months of work by the Financial Planning Team, which begins immediately upon the start of the fiscal year, getting along with the revenues, and understanding what... and understanding what revenues and expenses we have for the next year. So that can't be underscored, and it really is unique to this town. And the town leaders are to be commended for their role in that process. The budget highlights I've put up here, the, there is no use of free cash to fund this year's budget, and there's only a modest use of reserves. And that's a step in the right direction. I think we can all agree. We're, I am looking to earmark some of our free cash, which you've done earlier, to build up our reserves. And we're continuing our initiatives in the public safety, police, and fire departments, and full staffing in those departments, which is notable and noteworthy. And then, the total budget increase is 4.6%. Budget risks? There are always budget risks. Management changes, key managers in new positions, and I think that can be a good thing. Public safety and necessary revenue to sustain personnel programs and address critical community needs. You know that the town began a ambitious program a couple of years ago to transition to ALS. Through the fire chief, we are there. So the budget presumes that we will have ALS staffing twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. And that provides a significant amount of money that comes back to the town to directly fund fire services. Energy is always a concern, through vehicle use, natural gas for heating and electricity. As you know, any time that there is a disaster or hurricane, fuel prices spike up, and the town sees that in terms of its risks. Health insurance, newly enacted federal law changes and mandates. And then, lastly, mandates impacting education and other town services. And I'm sure the school department very well knows about what the cost of mandates are. And a number of those mandates are unfunded and come directly before you as the voters at town meeting. And then, lastly, veterans' benefits and other economy-driven costs. As the economy continues to flounder, the town has an obligation to provide support to its veterans and other individuals who qualify for various benefits. This is just a summary of how we apply the budget and how we apply our revenues between the town and the schools. And the pie indicates, as you can see here, that the significant share of the town's revenues apply toward the school department to address their critical needs. The next slide simply shows the division of revenues between the town and the schools. And it's sixty-six percent of the new revenues go to the schools, and thirty-four percent of the revenues go to the town. And this really should be of no surprise. This has been institutionalized in probably the seven of the nine years that I've been here. And I think it will carry forward, and it serves the town well. This is just a summary of our cash reserves. And as you can see, the cash reserves are okay for a town of this size. The town typically has a free cash of about a million dollars a year on a sustainable basis. The stabilization fund has grown to the point where we are just over $2 million. The capital stabilization fund, which Mr. Kelher talked about, will be used. We have 563,000. And there are a number of other stabilization funds and special-purpose funds that we show here. I do want to note that the cell tower fund is something that we continue to grow revenue with. The board of selectmen just approved a contract earlier this night, this evening, that will provide $410,000 in revenues over the next ten years for cell tower contracts. And a week prior to that, they also approved two additional contracts for $400,000 over the next ten years. So the board, through its actions, approved about $1.2 million in contracts to continue to grow this fund going forward. And it's an important piece of how we fund the overall revenue picture for the town. These are some of the key revenue adjustments through the financial planning team. You can see that we have, these are the, primarily the increases that we've shown. So these aren't the totals that we collect, but the increases. And you can see the most significant increase that we have a year is motor vehicle excise tax. It's a major revenue source for the town. And the town really needs you to go out and buy new cars on a regular basis, so this number continues to grow. Key expenditure drivers, coma pay increases. Six unions are settled. So you can see that we have cost of living adjustments of $226,346 on the town side. Capital improvements of $98,645. And then, the other expenses, as you see, set forth here. I did talk a little bit earlier about the ambulance ALS program. And the number that you see here of $80,000 represents the ability to fill vacant shifts twenty-four, seven, around the clock. So that's the cost that we've identified here. The general liability insurance increase is a result of new and beautiful school coming on board. So we want to be able to insure that and provide that that asset is protected in the future. I talked a little bit about health insurance, and I don't want to spend too much time beating a dead horse, but it's one of the subjects I do like to talk about. It's the big, it's like the iceberg. Most of it's below the bottom line. And see that the budget is almost $5.5 million. It's a 4% increase from the present year. That's pretty good. If you look at where the town has been in the past, it's been upwards of 12 to 16%. And we have obligations caused by the Federal Affordable Care Act. We've adjusted our costs based upon subscriber enrollment and adjusted for the rating fees for FY two thousand and fifteen. And through our human resources director, who's sitting here in the front row, hoping I don't talk about health insurance any longer, we need to continue our dialogue with our union employees to meet the Affordable Care Act requirements. Those of you who know it know that there are many opportunities and risks that are out there. This is just a summary of the total cost increases. The major point is there are no shortfalls. The budget that's being presented to you this evening is 100% balanced. It fully funds our fixed costs, general government operations, and schools. Now, certainly, if you've paid attention to the budget process, you know that the need always outstrips the amount of money that we have available. But this is a reasonable expectation of what we have and the monies that we have available. So at this point, what I'd like to do is conclude my presentation and say that the budget is balanced. We would be more than happy to respond to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Does the school committee wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Benatzi?
I figured you were just going to take the money and run. I didn't know you wanted to get up there.
The school committee recommends Article thirteen. While I'm up here, I'd like to thank Greg Ballack bonus. Greg, you've been a great part of the school department and a great supporter of the building project. We're going to miss you, and I wish you the best of luck in the future. I'd also like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Kathy Willis. As most of you probably know by now, Kathy's retiring in the fall of this year. She's been with us for four years. She's done a tremendous job here, not only for the school department, for the entire community. This very well could be our last meeting. So again, Kathy, on behalf of the school committee, hopefully the entire town, good luck.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing no further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. The selectmen and finance committee did their recommendations before the presentation. One motion at a time. Yeah, I know. No further discussion? All those favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? There is one more motion under Article thirteen. You may have noticed in the original motion, he excluded the debt because that requires a two-thirds majority. So, Mr. Frisco, you have the floor?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate and transfer the sum set forth in column-headed selectman recommended in line ninety-one, debt service, in the amount of $7,747,273, including the transfer of other funds, all as set forth in the budget detailed dated June second, two thousand and fourteen.
Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Frisco?
Board of selectmen recommend.
Does the finance committee wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Pollard?
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? This will fund the debt service portion of the budget that does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate amounts to purchase items of capital nature specified in Article fourteen as printed in the warrant and recommended by the capital improvement planning committee. And furthermore, in all instances where bond is listed as a source of funds, said borrowing will be pursuant to national law, Chapter forty-four, Section nine, Section seven, subsection nine, or any other enabling authority to authorize the treasury with the approval of the board of selectmen to borrow such specified sums, initial binds, and notes therefore.
We have the motion. Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation, Mr. Fode?
Board of selectmen recommend unanimously.
For the finance committee, Mr. Keller.
I'm not going to touch the slide. Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? This doesn't include bonding? I'm sorry. Mr. McGrath? You can come down front if you want.
Ed McGrath, Ed Laurel Road. Question, can we get some, just an overall explanation? Not all of us can make every budget meeting. I have a couple of questions. Is there an opportunity to get a hybrid vehicle for the new senior van? What's the turnout gear? Just your overall explanation of what's on this list that's in the warrant?
Mr. Keller?
Why don't I go down? I may need some help from Mr. Carnell Bailey to get into the water department, though. Computer equipment replacement is an annual program of replacing laptops, desktops in the, in the, in the town. The turnout gear replacement, fire department, each firefighter has two sets of turnout gear. The life of the turnout gear, and I may correct it from wrong here, is ten years. One of the sets of turnout gear for the firefighters is now at the tenth year. It needs to be replaced. What will happen is that the current five-year gear will become the backup gear, and the new gear will become the frontline gear. So that's, that's the turnout gear for the firefighters. It, it's a safety issue. Matter of fact, it's, it's, it's a legal requirement that that be replaced. That, that came to the capital improvement planning committee, and we absolutely supported that requirement. The upgrade in the portable radios for the police department, this is about half of the request. The radios are, that they currently have, are not as functional as, as we would want them to be. We're replacing half of them this year with the intention of replacing the balance of them next year. So the police department has up-to-date equipment. The town road program, I mentioned earlier, this 165,000. This augments the Chapter ninety money, the $507,000 that we'll receive from the state. And with the, the both of these items in place, that will provide almost 95% of the requested roadwork for fiscal '15. Computer replacement in the schools. These are laptops and, and desktops as well under a replacement program. We did some last year. We're doing some now. In all likelihood, it will be able to some more next year. What's occasioning, part of this is Microsoft is not supporting the old XP system so that we need to, to start replacing some of that equipment. We're doing, as I say, we'll see this again next year. Phone upgrade in the schools. This is to bring the elementary schools in line with the, the balance of the school system, including the new phone system that will be going into the middle school and high school. So there will be good connectivity between the schools. Fire station upgrades. The, I'm trying to get the right one here. Ah, we can use this. Thank you. This is, these are air conditioning systems for the, the fire station, replacing some wall units that are in there now with something, something more permanent. The drain repair systems, did we talk about that on the presentation? That, that was, yeah. So we sat on that one? Okay. Replacing a wood sheper. There is a, an old wood sheper in the DPW uses that we looked at it, and somebody referred to it as the hamburger maker. Really old, not a lot of safety features on it. We need to stop using it and replace it. It's a tool that's used by DPW, cleaning up after storms and, and taking care of brush and tree limbs and the like that come down. The one we had was not a, not terribly safe. The town hall doors, three doors in the back of town hall, these are original to the building. They're not ADA compliant. They're leaky, and they needed to be replaced. I mentioned, we looked at all of the requests and ranked every one of them individually, and then, and then brought this all back together as a composite ranking. So this, this, these are all coming out of the, the activity of the full capital improvement planning committee. Public safety, exterior repairs over the fire station. The Kukula and the Dummer's are in bad shape. Really can't be just fixed. They need to be replaced. The new senior van, the current senior van is leaky, not suitable for the, the need of elder affairs in transporting seniors. As I say, we saw pictures of it. We actually looked at it a year ago when the request was made. Didn't recommend it a year ago. Looked at it again this year and decided that it needed to be replaced. I can't speak to the, to the hybrid van. Maybe somebody else knows more about vehicles than I can, but I don't believe this is a hybrid van. To replace the culvert centralist at Scug River. Again, this was an item that was on last year's capital request from DPW. We did not recommend funding it last year. This year, it's a year worse. There, and Dick can talk about the situation, but it's fix it now or fix it later. And we can fix it now for $150,000. If we don't take care of it, we run the risk of some, some, some damage to the roadway and having a much more expensive project. So we, we deem this to be something that ought to be, ought to be funded. Hillview, the million dollars, is to replace the irrigation system. This is going to be bonded over, I think, a fifteen-year period. And it fits within the, the ability of Hillview to, to pay the debt service on, on that item. I think it's like about $67,000 a year plus interest. So it's not, obviously not sure that they're, they're going to be able to, to deal with it. The water, the water tower hangar bolts, you saw a picture of that. That's scary. That needs to be done. The West Village well upgrade, that, again, you saw that in, in the previous presentation. I think you saw all of the others, except for the replacement of the three-quarter ton pickup truck. There were two requests in the, the Water Enterprise capital request. There were two requests in the, the Water Enterprise capital request for vehicles. We looked at both of them and judged one of them to be in worse shape than the other. So we're recommending replacing the, the three-quarter ton pick, three-quarter ton pickup. This year, I fully expect that the other vehicle will be recommended for replacement next year. As I said earlier, we looked at three years' worth of, of capital needs. We will now go back and, and meeting, and we haven't met since, since we made our presentation to the, the Selectmen a little while ago. We will now schedule some more meetings so we can look at the items that we didn't cover this year, and the, the next two years' worth of requests. And in the fall, we will again ask department heads to give us their, their list of capital needs and give some, some priority to this. I think that's it. Any other questions?
Yes, I'm Julie Brown from Thirty Southwood Road, North Reading. I just wanted to know, when we replaced these computers with, for the town of the school, where do the old computers go? Are they resalable?
I don't think they are, I will let them go. RIT Director? I think they go to computer heaven.
Yes.
My name is Eugene Tuarica, I'm the IT manager here in, in the town for the town. Currently, we take our, our retired computers and destroy the hard drives and any, any information that's on it. And turn the, the units to a recycler. In particular, these because the XP operating system they have on them is outdated. And they're old, most of them are two thousand and four, two, two, two thousand and six. So they're eight to ten years old and deemed not usable for, or to be repurposed in any way.
I mean, do they have, do they have a resale value at all? Even for recycling?
In our estimation, no. We've looked into that, and there's, there is, there, there is recycling, if we were recyclers, I suppose we could get some, get some revenue out of it. But we're not recyclers, we, they tear them down and, and sell the components for whatever parts they can, whatever pricing it is. We don't, we don't do that.
All right, and another question I had, are we going to reduce our barrels and our tonnage? And this has all been good for the town, does that mean that our tax burden as far as our trash removal will go down?
Mr. Fode?
I don't, I don't think you'll see it go up, I think the purpose of it is so you won't see it go up. I mean, our costs are going to go up over the next several years, but because our, our tonnage will stay stabilized until we are even reduced, you won't see, hopefully you won't see any increases, that's our idea.
Will the profit that we get, will it go into the stabilization fund or?
I think that's, has to determine because we don't know what the savings is going to be until that, until we realize.
Okay, my other question on the, am the, the water commission, what is it called to be? This one here for the study, for the water?
The water.
The upgrading, right, and the connection, are we going on to the Mass Water District?
That hasn't been determined yet, that's what the, the study's flawed, or in terms of its...
Don't have we run studies every single time we come to town meeting for the budget? Don't we have more water studies?
Don't we have, I'm sorry.
Don't we have more studies for this particular thing every single town meeting?
I don't, I don't recall.
I, I recall last year raising the same question. And it was even more money. For a study.
I can't hear him, sorry. Yeah, so there's, there's phases that are required, so last year there was a draft EIR which required us to, to do some studies and submit that to, to DGP to, to make sure that we can go that way. Once that's been determined, there's other steps that we have to go through to make sure that we can obtain the water from the EIR and then obtain what we're using for, for supply.
Okay, and also if we change into the water, when we improve the Stickney Well and we improve the other projects that they have for water, is that going to reduce the amount of water we have to purchase for Managua?
If we go to the EIR, yes.
No, no, not to, no, not to the Mass, I'm talking with the improvements that we're going to do at the Stickney Well and the West Village.
No, no, it's not a supply issue, that's just an issue of making sure that those facilities are working properly, it's not going to be a supply issue. We still have an issue with supply.
Right, but it's not going to increase our supply of water?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moderator, follow up.
Mr. McGrath.
Follow up please, Ed McGrath, Ed Laurel Road. Just a clarification that the items on this list for water are being paid on the Enterprise account. And also that the, you said mention Hillview was being paid by the Water Commission. And the other question I have is regarding computers, as the gentleman mentioned about how the Microsoft has changed to eight and not supporting XP, strikes me as there's a dark cloud on the horizon for our computer systems in town. At some point, maybe not tonight, but get some type of indication of what the long-term plan is to replace the town's computers, upgrade them to the appropriate standard?
Mr. McGrath, I will verify that.
Mr. Fode?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, let's, let's, please, let's not have dialogue, let's go through the chat.
I apologize. I can verify that the, the water items on this list are covered on the Water Enterprise, as is the, the Hillview.
Who, Mr. Misery, can you address the computer issue? I know you know a little something about computers.
My, my business is IT, and we accumulate a lot of, just to answer the previous question, we accumulate a lot of old computers from our clients. And we actually end up paying to have them disposed of. So that's one issue. The other issue is that computers and technology increases such a rapid rate that they get old pretty quick. And I think our IT Director Gene Turick mentioned that the ones that he's replacing, these old XP systems are from eight to ten years old. So they, they really have no value. And the amount of money that's in the budget for replacements is basically an annual request, similar to the school's sixty thousand dollar request, to keep our equipment current. So thirty thousand dollars buys X number of computers, and the idea is that every five or six years, we are replacing that equipment. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote, as some of these items are bonding, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article fifteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the purposes of funding fiscal year two thousand and fifteen retirement obligations for town employees as specified in Article fifteen as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make my recommendation? Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Schubert.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Discussion, Mrs. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Marcy Bailey, twenty-one, Duane Drive, Vice Chair of the Flimmore Library Trustees. I would just like to, under this article, acknowledge our library director, Helena Minton, who will be retiring at the end of the summer. Helena has been with us since two thousand and one, and under her direction, the library has strengthened. It's been a time of transition for libraries, both because of the economy. When the economy turned down, library business turned up because people turned to libraries to use computers, to borrow books they no longer had money to buy, to read magazines, and just to have sometimes a cool and comfortable place to use wireless internet. That also brings me to the development of technology and how the Flimmore Library, under Helena's very able direction, has kept pace with technology, employing various, I guess, various programs that I hope you've all seen, such as Wowberry, which tells you what books are available in your library, and you can reserve them right online, Books and Beyond, our newsletter, and just other forms of technology, Reserving Museum passes online, and under Helena's direction, the library has made all these innovations, used technology, to hopefully make the library more useful, more user-friendly, and really just open to more members of the community, whether you can physically get out or not to our library. So I'd like to thank Helena, compliment her, and say that the library is always her able direction very greatly. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Article sixteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from solid waste management lines forty-eight and forty-nine in the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen operating budgets, voted under Article fourteen of the June third, two thousand and thirteen town meeting, the sum of sixty-nine thousand dollars to be added to the solid waste stabilization fund established under Article five in the October's two thousand and seven town meeting, as specified in Article eighteen, excuse me, Article sixteen as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the Board of Selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Schubert.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Bailey, go on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I think I heard a question earlier. Any surplus that exists in the sanitation budget at the end of the year goes into this account. What we want to do is we want to keep fee money that's raised through the trash fee to be used for offsetting future trash costs. Otherwise, what happens is it gets commingled into the general fund, it loses its identity, and the integrity of having a separate trash use fee no longer applies. So this is one of those instances, we've identified a sixty, ninety thousand dollar surplus. Through the end of this fiscal year, wish to capture that money, put it in this account, and use it to apply toward future recycling, trash collection, and sanitation costs. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing none, this is a stabilization transfer, requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Article seventeen, Mr. Ull.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Article seventeen, transfer funds to other post-deployment benefits liability trust fund. I move to pass over Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
Does the Board of Selectmen wish to, wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Ull.
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend to pass over.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Keller.
The Finance Committee also recommends passing this article over, and only because there are no funds available at, at the June town meeting. In the October town meeting, when free cash is, is known, we would, we will recommend that a significant amount of money be, be placed into this fund. Mrs. Schubert mentioned in her opening comments, this is a, a, a very large liability of the town. We need a plan, we need some funding, and October would be a good time to start.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Article eighteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant access easement over the property at which the new high school is located at Park Street and Sherman Road, shown on Assessors Map forty-two as Lot one forty, and comprised of six thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven square feet, more or less. All is shown on easement plan dated April first, two thousand and fourteen, drawn by Welch Associates Land Surveyors, on file with the town clerk. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant said easement to Kevin and Susan Gill, the owners of the property shown on Assessors Map forty-two as Lot one thirty-nine. Upon such terms and conditions, the Board of Selectmen shall deem appropriate, and to take whatever action may be necessary or convenient to effectuate the vote taken here under, as specified in Article eighteen, as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion, does the Board of Selectmen wish to recommend, Mr. O'Leary?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mr. Keller.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends this article as well.
Discussion, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just by way of a little history here, this is in direct correlation to the school building project. One parcel of land, the very corner of the property, at the drive entrance to the driveway, to the main, main entrance to the driveway for the high school, is owned by the Gills. In order to obtain safe and adequate access for vehicular traffic, it's necessary for us to acquire this parcel. It's a very small parcel, and you'll see in the next article, I might have a little liberty here, the next article is for the taking of this particular land if we need to. It's, it's about a hundred and twenty-seven square feet, but it's right at the very corner, on the westerly side of the driveway, which is going to require, require safe and adequate access. So the Gills have been very kind in working with us in order to effectuate a land swap, basically, an easement swap. They're going to grant us a permanent easement across their portion of the land. In return, the Gills have been enjoying the use of about a twenty-foot access off the driveway of the high school for, in excess of thirty years, to access part of their property. So we're going to effectuate, basically, in the swap of easements. In order to effectuate that, this particular article grants them an easement on a third of the way up the driveway, and then the twenty feet that they've been utilizing for a number of years. In return, they're going to give us easements, permanent easement at the base of the driveway. The easement that they are going to be giving to us is going to be effectuated under an article that we already approved, it was Article nine, which allows the BPW Director to accept easements on behalf of the town. Their easement will be granted under Article, Article nine. So what we're asking for, again, we're in full agreement with the, with the Gills, this is a friendly, friendly arrangement. We're just finalizing the, the documents right now, but it's essential for the, for the project. So we're asking your support. That's about it.
Further discussion. This does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Article nineteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you very much for that, but, and this one here, Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of, Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, swap, purchase, and/or eminent domain, a portion of land located on Park Street and on Assessors Map forty-two Lot one thirty-nine, which portion contains a hundred and twenty square feet, more or less, as set forth on a sketch plan on file with the town clerk for general municipal purposes, including improved access to the new middle school, high school, upon such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen shall deem appropriate. And further, to execute documents and take whatever other action may be necessary to effectuate the vote taken here under, as specified in Article nineteen, as printed in the warrant, and to appropriate the sum of one dollar for such purposes.
The recommendation for the Board of Selectmen, Mr. O'Leary.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend.
For the Finance Committee, Mrs. Schubert.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Discussion, Mr. Willery.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, this is just a safeguard for the town. Should there be a, a problem with the deed or the title on the property, this will allow the town, the board of selectmen, to take the property by eminent domain or purchase it from the Gills to clear title on it for the sum of $1. So again, we've already informed the Gills as to the effects of this. We do not intend or anticipate necessarily having to utilize it, but should we have to use it, it's here and we're authorizing it. We can't turn to agreements. So it has to be a support. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Vino.
Yes, Josephino, 11 Rock Street. Just out of curiosity, why was not, why wasn't lot one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight involved in this? It looks like you were kind of around it.
Mr. Willery.
Because the only parcel which is in question on this one, gentlemen, is the corner at the entrance to the driveway, which is the Gills' property. That's the only thing we need. That's the only thing we're requiring through a gift of service from them. No other parcels are needed.
Oh, oh, so the others up the top you're not looking for?
Not at all.
One thirty-four, one thirty?
Nope.
Oh, okay, because there's still this, that's.
All right. I understand, I understand the confusion, but no, they're not, not part of the agreement here. Not, there's no need in terms of the project's needs. Thank you. And by the way, there's no reference to it at all in the, in the motion.
Ma'am.
Yes, Diane, thirty-one Duane Drive. I'm wondering, these people all obviously are aware of this.
They're just, they're just to your left, right in front of you, right there.
So the only family affected, actually?
Yeah, the only family's affected and they're party to the old agreement.
Oh, that's, that's great, because we did something else by eminent domain on Eisenhower property and that has turned into a.
Oh, it's a far different crime.
So I don't like to get everywhere in the domain.
And again, we use it very judiciously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? This also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you and thank you to the Gills. Appreciate it.
Article twenty, Mr. Foley.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article twenty, as printed in the warrant.
Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation? Mr. Fode?
Board of selectmen unanimously approve.
The finance committee, Mr. Schubert.
The finance committee recommends passing over this town meeting. However, we had hoped to start an annual giving as, or to make repairs to town buildings on a regular basis. I'm not talking about huge amounts of money. I'm not talking about $600,000 for whatever. We're talking about, you know, $50,000 to make standardized progress to try and keep the town buildings in reasonable shape. So I look forward to seeing this article in the fall. Hopefully, then we'll have some additional funding available.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-one, Mr. Fode.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article twenty-one, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Fode?
Board of selectmen, I recommend passing over.
For the finance committee, Mr. Schubert.
The finance committee recommends passing over this article.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-two, Mr. Frisco.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of $934,000 as the premium paid to the town upon the sale of bonds or notes issued for the middle, I'm sorry, for the high slash middle school construction project, which are the subject of a proposition two and a half debt exclusion, to pay for cost of the project being financed by such bonds or notes and to reduce the amount authorized to the borrowed for such project, but not yet issued by the town by the same amount as specified in Article twenty-two of the warrant.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Frisco.
Unanimously recommends.
For the finance committee, Mr. Schubert.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say. Mr. McGrath?
Mr. McGrath, the North Road. So is this good? Are we coming out $900,000 on the plus side or is it costing us $900,000? Not clear on that.
Liz?
We had a similar article at last June town meeting from the first borrowing for the high school, middle school project and it was in the sum of approximately $5 million. So what it is, is we, you know, anticipated borrowing 18 million. However, we knew we were going to receive a premium. So we reduced the borrowing by the $934,000 premium and only borrowed 17 million to then use this towards actual cash for the project versus borrowing. So we still, you know, in a sense, borrowed the same, but this is cash on hand that we can use to pay for the project.
So it's a good thing. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-three, Mr. Willery.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article twenty-three, as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the selectmen, Mr. Willery.
Selectmen unanimously recommend passing over.
For the finance committee, Mr. Foley.
Finance committee recommends passing over.
Further discussion, Mr. Willery.
By way of explanation, the previous article, we're looking to reappropriate some funds from a previous town meeting. The Hillview had appropriated for the functional facility and now looking to use the residual funds for improvements on the golf course. There's a question which had been raised by both town council and bond council as to whether or not this was appropriate action to be taking at this particular time because of the two separate uses as far as what was originally proposed and what's being proposed this evening. So we're not prepared to move forward on it at this particular point in time, so that's why we're recommending passing over.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of passing over, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-four will be taken up in a motion, but twenty-four through thirty-two will all be included in the motion. Twenty-four through thirty-two, these are reauthorizations of revolving funds. Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Articles twenty-four through thirty-two, revolving funds, reauthorization. I move to reauthorize the following revolving funds as specified in Articles twenty-four through thirty-two, as printed in the warrant. Article twenty-four, conservation and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $100,000. Article twenty-five, gaming tavern and to set the maximum expenditure for year 2015 at $78,000. Article twenty-six, rain barrel and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $1,941. Article twenty-seven, recycling and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $2,000. Article twenty-eight, Department of Health Affairs and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $12,000. Article twenty-nine, emergency management, all hazards and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $15,000. Article thirty, youth services and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $80,000. Article thirty-one, library activity room and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $15,000. And finally, Article thirty-two, board of health and to set the maximum expenditure for FY 2015 at $25,000.
Recommendation for the board of selectmen, Mr. Yule.
Yes, by a majority vote, the board of selectmen recommend.
For the finance committee, Mr. Schubert.
The finance committee recommends a reauthorization.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? I think I have one more motion, Mr. Missary.
Mr. Moderator, before the motion on personal privilege, I would like to recognize Sean Delaney, who's a retired selectman who's served our community for the past six years, has served on the school building committee, has been a key member of that committee and is now back on the committee as a citizen representative. So I'd like to give a big round of applause to Mr. Delaney. Thank you, Sean. Mr. Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting soon and today.
I have the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Enjoy the rest of your evening.